Okay, I will call the September ninth Port Edward Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call please.
Oh, let's see, where should we start? Dan Martinson.
Here.
Kerry Elbegrand.
Here.
It's been a long day, I'm just gonna start that off right now, been a long day.
Good morning.
John Dobbin.
Here.
Pretty soon I'll forget somebody's name, but Leo Thomas-Carth.
Yep.
Kathy McGrath.
Here.
All right, thank you. First item is I'll seek approval to approve the agenda for tonight.
Remove second.
A motion and a second? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is approved. Next is President's Report, all board members are in attendance for tonight. And our next board meeting is October fourteenth. And October also brings budget hearing and annual meeting, which is Monday, October twenty-sixth, at six P M. Okay. Move on to administrative reports, first one is Superintendent Corona, report on two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget planning and district procedures when students and staff are sick.
So as we get to the annual meeting time in October, we're still working on our final budget calculations. However, there is some positive at this point from what we are able to look at. We're looking at a potential of two hundred to three hundred thousand in additional revenue limit money. And that's due to the way the formula works for a calculation. And that has to do with the fact that we're looking for this year that we our average enrollment will actually be up from what it was last year. So with that average enrollment up, that means more revenue limit dollars. However, there is the possibility the legislature yet adjusts the revenue limit this year. And if the legislature were to adjust the revenue limit, there's an automatic increase in the revenue limit dollars this year that's built into the budget. But if the legislature were to take that dollar amount away, we'd probably be looking at a potential of about a hundred and twenty thousand above last year's revenue limit. Now, overall, just because there's more dollars in the revenue limit, doesn't mean that our tax actually goes up. At the moment, from what we can tell based on the preliminary numbers from the state, we're looking at actually having an increase in state aid for our total revenue limit, which actually means we're looking at the moment of a potential of at least keeping the tax rate the same, potentially a lower tax rate actually moving into this next year. We're right on the cusp of that scenario playing out. Now, the one kicker in all this, we do not have our equalized value data yet. But I am able to go look at the municipal equalized values. And from that I can tell you, we do have one reason of concern in our municipal values, and that's in the township of Cranmore. Township of Cranmore actually decreased by six million dollars this year in equalized values in township. It went from about forty-one million to thirty-five million in equalized value, which is huge. However, for them. However, all of our other equalized values across all of our other municipalities, from what I can tell, all the other municipalities went up. The village of Port Edwards alone went up about four million. And we tax, the school districts tax, most of it comes out of the village of Port Edwards. In fact, one hundred percent of the village of Port Edwards is within our within our school district, so that's a good piece. Same with Cranmore though, one hundred percent of Cranmore is within our school district. Saratoga, Seneca, and the town of Port Edwards, all some increases. But again, how that calculates for us, because we're only partially part of those municipalities. If I kept percentages relatively the same compared to last year's percentages from those municipalities, we'd be looking at about a million dollar increase in our total district equalized value. Now, again, I'm just, I don't know that for sure yet until those numbers are finalized on the, for the district.
Is there any reason why Cranmore's assessments were so dramatically different, did they do a reassessment?
There must be something within the reassessments, I looked and there were some changes in how, where they were valuing things in Cranmore. But that's more on the municipal end, I can't, I mean, I can't speak toward that specifically.
For a rural township, that's astounding. That's a tremendous change.
It was, that is the only one of our, it's the only one of our municipalities that had that kind of an increase.
Okay, thank you.
And again, Port Edwards, the village, was up by four million, so. In terms of our operating budget, we've been working on putting that together with the priority obviously being a response to COVID nineteen between supplies, facility adjustments, and staffing. However, we still want to be working on other items in our budget, concluding a bargaining agreement with our, with the Port Edwards Education Association at some point. We have put that off at the moment until we kind of make sure we are in a good place to finalize a bargaining agreement, we do need to do that. Working to enhance the curriculum again this year, and we're looking at social studies as probably our primary area to address, and then certainly some further facility items. In the facilities, items to address would be continuing to update the elementary facility through some of the different wings that we have not hit, the two and three area, and then the three and four area in this particular building with carpet and lighting. And then looking at the high school library flooring. And one of the items that's on our list of things that we need to tackle is our generator at the middle school, high school. That unit's from the nineteen sixties, and it is, we're having issues with it. So either looking at an overhaul or some kind of an update to that unit. With that, just before I do the healthcare procedures, any questions budget-wise at the moment? There's still a lot of unknowns, but we've started piecing things together, there's obviously probably gonna be, we're not sending staff out to a lot of conferences, we're not taking a lot of field trips at the moment. So there'd be some items within the actual budget that for this year may look different than again down in the future. Same with summer school, we didn't really run a full elementary summer school this year, so that'll be a savings in the budget. Kicker with not doing the full summer school program the way we did, we'll probably see a little bit of a revenue decrease, it's not gonna be huge. Summer school revenue was not huge, but that piece will be there. Healthcare procedures. I want to take a few moments and discuss this. This is a really, this is an item that I think we've learned a lot about in the last week of operating school, and I think we're gonna continue to learn a lot about it. I'm gonna take a moment, I'm gonna hand you a document from Wood County Health. So in terms of healthcare procedures, the document I handed you probably does the best to explain what we're looking for at school and what parents, we would like parents to be looking for. It really boils down to looking at different symptoms. And over the course, I can give you, I can give you a couple of numbers. Over the course of the past week and a day that school has been in session, we have had students exhibiting illness or called in with illness that are non-COVID-like, so talking non-COVID-like symptoms, other things, whether they're explainable things or whatnot. We've had fifteen students out in the district during this, this last week and a day for non-COVID-like things at any given time. So fifteen students. Students exhibiting any of the symptoms that you see on this chart, and you'll notice up at the top, there's two sets of symptoms. One is cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste, new loss of smell, or the other is any of the following two, and it goes through a list of like fevers, chills, body aches, headaches, or throat fatigue, congestion, runny nose, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. We have had a total of thirteen students exhibit something on that list of what I would call COVID-like symptoms. Now, the thing to remember is COVID-like symptoms are also the symptoms of a whole lot of other things. So anytime that we have a student who exhibits COVID-like symptoms, or a staff member, we isolate them out of our system, and we exclude them then from school. Until, and if they have COVID-like, they're excluded for at least ten days from the onset of symptoms, and at least twenty-four hours fever-free, or unless they get a COVID test and it comes back negative. So that's what happens there. Now, we've actually also excluded sixteen more individuals, and that would be, it's either thirteen, it's three, thirteen students and three, it's either sixteen or seventeen, I'm sorry, I meant to say seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
Now, it excludes thirteen students or addition?
No, no, I'm gonna tell you, we've, this is in addition to, we've excluded seventeen more people.
On top of them.
On top of that thirteen, and the reason we've done that is they're siblings or parents who happen to be staff members. And so when you look at that, we've actually excluded more people who actually had no symptoms, none of them had symptoms. They were just siblings and or, again, staff members who exhibited, or who had students in. The reason we do that, if you look at this chart, this chart says, when does my sick child and other family members need to stay home? And it's if anyone in the house has any of these, or at least two of the following. It says possible COVID nineteen, all family members should stay home. Now, if you happen to be one of those people who is non-symptomatic, you're potentially out for fourteen days, even though symptomatic persons are out ten days. And a very, a very, to the heart of the matter conversation with the county health department, okay, walk me through this. And the reason that is, is COVID's, the period that you're contagious, what they have, what they are using are the guidelines from the state health department, the CDC, and that contagious period starts two days prior to the onset of symptoms, but runs for a total of ten days, unless you're continuing to show symptoms, or unless you continue to have a fever. If you continue to show symptoms that are worsening, you're excluded longer, but if your symptoms are getting better, or if they go away completely, your period is essentially that ten days. Somebody who is not showing symptoms actually has a longer period, because if the person is infectious, again, it might take a couple of days for the onset of symptoms, and so that's why the person without symptoms actually has a longer period of out. So in school, you heard some of the statistics, what's that looking like for us? So we're excluding people, and then we're talking with the health department about who we're excluding. We're talking about why, and then if we do, you know, if we come to the, then the time when we have a positive case, we have conversations with the health department about, were they close contact with anybody? At the moment, close contacts could be excluded, so if the health department, you know, informs somebody they're a close contact of a COVID positive, then we would exclude that person. Positives are excluded, and then as well, we would look at a return date from the county, and the county provides that information, and will provide it to us, or the individual can provide it to us as well from the county. And so this is a completely new phenomenon. Now, when will we notify parents of, first of all, if their child just has symptoms, we certainly notify the parent involved. We're not notifying everybody else of that, because again, there's a hundred and fifty explanations to why, one of which might be COVID. If it turns out that we have a COVID positive that is in close contact, we will let parents know that they are child, and we will work with the county to inform them that their child's been in close contact with the COVID, and then we'll work to then exclude those children. If they're not in close contact, they're not necessarily being informed.
Close contact would probably just include their particular class.
Yes, you know, a close contact is defined as anybody who comes within sixteen feet for fifteen or more minutes, and that's within six feet for fifteen or more minutes, mask doesn't matter, one way or the other at that point. If you're within six feet for fifteen or more minutes. So, yeah, it certainly could be a class, and it could be a, like here at the elementary, it could be at the high school, it might look a little different.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't include the whole school, then.
Not necessarily, no. And again, the people we are notifying and working with the health department is whoever is the close contact. And those communications will actually come directly from each school, working again with the health department to determine who we need to notify and when, so. This has been a bit of a process. We have, like I said, we are, we've actually at this point excluded more people who are not showing any symptoms than we have of people who are showing symptoms. And of those that we've excluded, those students, those we've gotten test results back for the students, we've not, not had positives coming through in that manner at this point. So within the classrooms and things, we've not had to do any close contact announcements or any of that nature, we've not had to go back and contact trace for any students at this time, so it's, it is quite the process. But I think the biggest thing that I think has surprised a lot of parents has been that when we're, when we're sending a child home who's not sick, I think that has been surprising to some parents. Now, this communication, this piece of information, did go out with the communication on August twenty-eighth, along with a whole bunch of question and answers to parents with the parent guide from Wood County Health Department. It's posted on our website, and that is something that the school nurse and our health aide have also gone over with parents as well, when we've had to exclude children. Any questions on that process at this point? It's every day is a new day, so, and we're learning.
All right, thank you. Our next report is from Principal Christie on starter school at elementary school.
Now, kind of what, things have gone surprisingly well. Our teachers have done a great job keeping kids distant. Our, the things that we had to work on the most were beginning of day, end of day, middle of day, and recess, because that's when the kids were congregated the most. Beginning of day, we made sure kids were separated, they're still getting breakfast in the cafeteria, and then recess has kind of been our biggest challenge. Our aides did an amazing job breaking our playground into zones where the kids for, right now, we're doing it a week at a time, so they can learn their zone, their area. They stay in that area and play in that area with their class, and then this week they switched to a new area. Once they learn those areas, we may be able to swap it out a little quicker, but the last two days, because of the weather, we got to try our indoor recess, which used to have a bunch of kids in here, and we played the dance thing on the screen, and the kids would dance and sing and do all that, well, we can't do that anymore. So we have had to keep kids in their classroom separated, and then have aides kind of covering so that teachers can run and do what they need to do, especially at lunch, when teachers need their own lunch as well. So that has been kind of challenging, but we are, we're making it work. Before school, it's even more challenging, because we have very few aides here, some of our aides don't get here until eight or eight-thirty, so we're making adjustments and making it work. I didn't think we'd have indoor recess this soon, but it happened, and that's, you know, trial and error, so it's working out just fine. I mean, teachers have smart boards that we can have kids do things on, we have, you know, coloring pages and little games that kids can do for their indoor recess, just to keep them busy when it's, when it's raining outside. So our end-of-day procedure has gone very smoothly, partly because we changed that last year, our method of getting all the bus kids out first, and then letting the kids who are getting picked up, having the parents pull up and pick them up, that actually ended up being a blessing in disguise this year, because the parents were already used to that. We just let one grade at a time go, and they line up and walk out with their class, and then the next grade, and it's, it worked, it worked really well, and the parents are used to that pattern, so that's been fine. Lunchtime, the only thing we had to separate, our lunchtime is still the forty-minute lunch and recess, nothing has changed with lunch except for when lunch happens. We had to kind of expand our lunch from, it starts around eleven o'clock and ends around twelve-ten, where everyone used to start at eleven-thirty and end at twelve-ten. Now we have each grade going separately, so that we can keep them separated at tables, tables clean, and then they can head outside. We have some kids who go outside first and then come in and eat, but we're making sure we had a couple of questions about kids having enough time to eat. It's no different than it's been any other year, it's still the forty minutes. If they're not done eating when they're released to go outside, they just stay and finish, and when they're done, we sanitize their area, and then another kid can sit there. So it's worked pretty well, so. I think we're, we're doing okay, it's okay.
Each day we're in is lost.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Next report is starter school at middle school, high school, Principal Schroder.
How long do I have? How long do I have? Kathy's right, last Friday I was like, maybe through the week. I'm thinking, if I gotta do that every week, I'm gonna tell a funny to start off with, and I think it was Cadence Group, that's the smallest group, we have four lunches now, and I panicked one day, because they all, the very first day, they all started going to lunch, and I turned around and there were some juniors with the freshmen and sophomores, I'm like, what are you doing eating right now? And they're like, what's wrong? I'm like, take your chicken sandwich and go outside. And they're like, okay. And they did just that, they took their meal outside, and I followed them, and I said, see, we have two broken lunches now, you can't come down here and eat. And I didn't know chicken sandwich is a popular item, and I didn't know if we'd get extras, so I told them not to, they're like, do you just want us to dump it? I'm like, no, 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 no. So you're right, every day, it's a new thing. The rain has brought us inside too, and I worry about that. So our smallest lunch is our juniors and seniors, because we let, you know, those people that can go, and they chose to go, so our number's really low, that helps us. I think we're learning from the kids too, and I put this in here kind of as a funny, but not really, between the, there's a five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and Frank and some crew, some of his crew come in, sweep the bathrooms, clean the bathrooms, clean the tables with us, I'm in there, there's aides in there, the lunch ladies are in there, and one of the junior's boys said to me the other day, I turned and they were, they're hungry, and he said, and I said, wait, 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 did all you guys wash your hands? Like, that's like the most common thing you say nowadays. And they're like, oh, so some of them did, and I said, you have time, because we gotta wait, wash the tables. And we're washing, and one of the junior boys said to me, Ms. Schroder, how long do you think you're really gonna keep this up, for real? And I, I looked at him, and I'm like, as long as we have to. This is what we have to do, this is my famous saying, to be open, or stay open. And then he said, so if we close, are you gonna be, feel defeated? And I was like, all of a sudden, I don't know, it just hit me, and I said, no, we're not gonna stop, we've got plan B, we've got plan C, we've got plan D, we're all gonna be okay. And they kind of laughed at me, but at that point, I looked at the kids watching us, and I'm thinking, they realize this is reality, they do, the kids, and that was what I was gonna open with, that we said this school year was gonna be really different, and every day we reflect on procedures and fine, fine tuning them, just to be successful, but the kids have been amazing, amazing. When I look at this week, they all filed in, you couldn't tell if they were smiling, that was the sad part, they all had masks on, I should say, except for one middle school student, and I'm working with the parent, there seems to be a medical issue. So nobody said, oh, do I have to wear, you know, like walking in, and we had some extras. They all kind of knew their block schedule, they got used to that, they got used to the routine in the morning and night, nobody really complains. It's just kind of like, end of story, they're happy to be there, they are so happy to be back, I think, regardless of the homework or whatever, and the adjustments, and sometimes we feel like we're running a little military, but they're happy to be there. So they're adjusting, they are doing an awesome job. I think on our part, we plan and planned all summer, and it all looked good on writing, and we discussed it and talked about it, and then you get thrown into it, and we, we find we need to tweak things. So at the end of last week, I think it was Jen and I that were talking, that said, we should get together and, and see what's going good and what's not. So we did, we met as a high school team, middle school team, each team had different perspectives, they're living a little bit different life, but we started out with the good things, so it was really nice to hear, and some of it were saying, why didn't we ever do that before? Or we're gonna do that next year. So actually, you know, I mean, we're in a crisis mode kind of, sort of, but we're really learning, like, there are things that I think will keep up that we are really happy with. So we discussed that. We tweaked anything that didn't work, for example, one of the things for the high school teachers were, we couldn't afford kids for the lockers between every, every session, even though we cohorted them at the lockers, because we don't want that fifteen minutes to go above fifteen. So they tweaked when they go, and I said, that's fine, but we need your help supervision out in the halls, and so we adjusted that, so the kids could take all their books for first and second hour, and third, and fourth, and we did all that, and it seems to be working fine. So everything that we've, you know, that's become a problem, we've kind of worked on. The middle school teachers wore classes, having a little bit more challenge than the high school. The high school have kind of co-horted freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, you know how their classes are, you know, like with the electives and everything, but we decided before the mask mandate, we were gonna cohort them in groups in the classrooms, and so we did that, that was in our plan, and then after that, the mask mandate came, and health board said, do both, they're both great things, you're doing a lot with that, don't take one away just because the other came. We came to you, we proposed it, it was approved. First couple of days, the block, you know, that they only see their kids, little kids once every other day, and the virtual learning, we've got probably more middle school students on virtual learning than we do high school, which is a surprise, and moving classrooms created a problem. So they were taking their devices, going somewhere, trying to log on, trying to start class, you know, and, and so we've done everything we can, there, you know, if it could go away, they would love it. One of the veterans said to me, I'll be fine as long as you tell me this is just a couple months and not my whole career. And in that meeting, I kind of copied something Kyle said, and Leo, in the service opening, I told those teachers, and Carol said too, I kind of got emotional, and I said, you know, they have to remember, and, and they took it with a, you know, true to their heart, it's them that's in the classroom that's amazing in teaching, not the bulletin board, not the game over there, not the poster, and I said, so you can just do your best job you can and continue on. What, and, you know, they have to realize that we at Port Edwards have had it good, you know, I've been in a classroom for thirty years, and I had a beautiful classroom, and if somebody had to tell me I'd go on wheels, I would have trouble too, but a week in, I think things have settled a little bit, and the teachers have figured things out, and Sonata's been running around getting all the classrooms and the smart boards configured to their laptops and everything, so it's going better. We've promised them, please know that this won't be all year, for years and years and years, but it is getting better. So we'll keep to continue to re-meet and share, you know, sometimes somebody comes up with an idea and tells another person it works, and it's great. The other things in the office that we've been working with are the absences, so it was to, to the parents' surprise that when one child says they're sick, all three go home sick, and parents will, you know, a lot of brothers and sisters got upset with each other, because said, are you really sick, I better be in my class, you know? So this is happening. We are working on a system, a lot of parents were misunderstood, and they thought, well, my kid could, if they're home today, they can go virtual, there's a lot more in preparing for that. So this week, I sent a note home to the parents about being in school and virtual learning, and what attendance looks like. Like, we can't flop from day to day, because some teachers go now a whole day, they get there at seven-thirty, have no prep till three-fifteen, so they can't prep, if there wasn't, if they had a class that didn't have a virtual student, we're not gonna make them do that in a, in a day. So we're working, I'm working with parents, if it's, if they're gonna be out for more than, and we haven't had a day or two waiting for a test, then, then we'll turn them virtual for fourteen days or whatever, and make sure they don't miss their education. The virtual kids that haven't been logging on, or plan to have been having trouble, or whatever, I've been talking to the parents nightly, because I run a report, and just say, hey, where was your kid, third hour? And we've been working on that, and specifically with the teachers, you know, because it's a new experience being on school from eight to three, not just getting an assignment done. I'll continue to do that for a couple of weeks, I think, and I, I think that'll kind of subside. The only other challenge we've started to encounter is subavailability, like he said, some teachers were out because their kids Like he said, some teachers were out because their kids were, you know, sick or for certain We've been filling in-house, because sometimes they go home like at 10 o'clock, and they only have one, one hour or something, but that's becoming hard because the teachers are adjusting to everything else. So when they finally get that prep, it's really hard for them to give that up. But they, they've been good so far, I just hate to keep asking them to do that. Good thing is sports started this week, we have high participation numbers and all around. Middle school volleyball started yesterday, football starts next week. Again, I think they're just excited to be back and be in activity. The next go-around that we're going to have after graduation is homecoming. They're hoping everything will look normal. I was, and with the, on Zoom with the Central Wisconsin principals today, and lots of them are planning things, but modified. So we haven't said yes or no to the kids, we know that there's going to be some modifications. You know, what will that look like? Who will participate? Where will it be? So I'm going to get the student council and the class advisors and stuff together and see what we can do. Oh, and just a funny. Our, down by our cafeteria, that, so we have four lunches, and now that we've been inside, we've been in the gym, in an hour and 20 minutes, that bathroom gets cleaned five times. It has never smelled and looked so nice. So these are the benefits we have. You went by there, I was like, oh my gosh, you could smell it in the hall. And they just had that cart there, and they just zoom in, zoom out, like, yeah, I, I think our school's been, is cleaner than it's ever been. So you're going to have to keep that up, Kyle. Any questions for me?
Kyle cleaning the bathroom?
No, he's not. Fine, he got us help to clean the bathroom five times. Thank you for cleaning the bathroom five times. Those little things.
Yeah.
Any questions? No?
One question? Okay.
Good job, principals. Oh my goodness.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is questions and comments from people in attendance. There's nobody that signed up, wish to address the board, so move on to the consent agenda. Number five, consider approval of minutes of asked meeting, August 12, 2020.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those vote. Motion carried. Number six, consider approval of financial reports. Do we have any gifts?
Financial reports, yes.
Okay. Seek a motion to approve financial report.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. There's no unfinished business tonight, so move on to new business. Number seven, consider approval of 2020, 21, poker